Welcome, everyone. This is the Tuesday, January 19th, 2021 City Council meeting. Let the roll call reflect that all council members are present, with the exception of Councilmember Lopez, who will be joining us shortly.
I'm here, Chair.
Oh, perfect. Welcome back. Before we begin, I will go ahead and read the Chair's determination to hold electronic meetings without anchor location. In accordance with the Utah Code 52-4-2074, I have determined that conducting meetings of the Ogden City Council with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present due to the infectious nature and potentially dangerous health effects of contracting the COVID-19 virus. This determination is based on the following. The Center for Disease Control and Prevention has determined that COVID-19 is easily spread between or among people who are in close contact with each other through airborne respiratory droplets and may be spread by people who are non-symptomatic. The state of Utah has developed a COVID-19 transmission index through a collaborative effort among state and local health officials, elected officials, the hospital industry, and business leaders. As of January 1st, 2021, Weber County was in the high transmission category, limiting group gatherings to 10 people or less. Based on the foregoing, all public meetings, including work sessions and meetings of the Redevelopment Agency, will be held electronically through January 31st, 2021. Information on how to connect to the electronic public meetings will be posted on each agenda. The public may comment during the electronic meeting and public hearings on agenda items designated for input or during the general public comment period. Written public comments may also be submitted through the following electronic options: telephonic message at 801-629-8158; public comment submission form at ogdencity.com-publicinput; or email at citycouncil@ogdencity.com. And this statement is issued and becomes effective January 12th, 2021. Thank you for that. Moving forward, well, we've asked Vice Chair Wyatt to lead us in a Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, everyone. If you would please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Wyatt. And now, if you would join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. First on the agenda is a recognition of the Weber State University Football Team, recognizing the 2019 Wildcat Football Team for its third consecutive Big Sky Conference Championship and historic run in the FCS Playoffs. And I believe we have Councilmember Nadolski presenting this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's, of course, my honor to lead the poll tonight while also reading this recognition. The Ogden City Council and Mayor proudly recognize the 2019 Weber State University Football Team for providing invaluable contributions to the Ogden community. The Weber State University Football Team had yet another historic season in 2019. The Wildcats posted an 11-4 overall record and a 7-1 record in the Big Sky Conference. They won their third consecutive Big Sky Championship, which is the seventh conference title in the history of the program. The Wildcats made it to the Football Championship subdivision playoffs for the fourth consecutive year and fought their way to the semifinals for the first time in school history. Twenty players earned Big Sky All-Academic honors. Four team players earned Big Sky All-Conference honors. And four players were named to the Hero Sports FCS All-America Team. Head Coach Jay Hill, Associate Coach Brent Myers, and Assistant Coaches Kite Afyaki, Joe Dale, Grant Duff, Quentin Ganther, Matt Hammer, Sean Harper, Gabe Long, Brady May, Skylar Ridley, Dave Schram, Jared Ursua, and Director of Football Operations Derrick Lukin have done a remarkable job leading the Wildcats to another record-breaking season. The team's play, commitment, and dedication has unified our residents and strengthened the sense of community pride in Ogden and Weber State University. And it is our honor to recognize Coach Hill, who is with us today, as we present this on the 19th day of January 2021. Is Coach still with us?
I'm with you. And this is such a big honor for us. It's, I think, the third year in a row that we've received something similar. And it's one of the best and biggest awards that we take pride in. So we really appreciate all that you guys have done, the Chair and the whole committee. We appreciate you guys so much for this award. Couldn't do without you. I think I mentioned this the last time we won, but our home record just continues to get better and better and better. And in 2019, going 8-0 was by far the best that, you know, any Weber State team has done at home. And anyway, we couldn't do without the community support and you guys backing us and the whole city of Ogden. So we appreciate you guys very much.
Coach, we appreciate you very much. We appreciate you staying here in Ogden with us and making that commitment to our community.
Exactly. Can I add that? Right, Coach? This is...
Yeah, well, we love it here.
Coaching. No, we appreciate that. Thank you very much. I just wanted to add my gratitude for you saying, no, you've got a lot of offers.
Yeah. We're glad you love it here as much as we love it. Coach, I think you're joined by, you got Assistant Coaches Noah Atagi, Noah Vaeia. Did I get that right?
Yep.
And Ty McPherson.
Yep. And then... And Eddie Heckard as well. Those guys are all on. I don't know if you want them to say a quick word of thanks, but I know those guys are extremely grateful as well.
Well, I'll defer to you, Coach, but we certainly want them to be recognized tonight for their efforts. It's, we know it's not just one man. It's a team effort, obviously.
Well, I think it's good for the community members to see who those knuckleheads are. So maybe they could just say hello and introduce themselves and where they're from.
Yeah, I can start. My name's Tyler McPherson. I'm from Highland, Utah, down in Utah County. And I've been at Weber State now for three years. I'm a junior. And like Coach Hill said, we can't thank you guys enough for your support and for everything that you guys have done for the program and for the city of Ogden. And, you know, we're just grateful to play football and just to have such a good team and such good coaches. So thank you, guys, and nice to meet you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, I'll go next. Sorry, my life's kind of dim, but my name is Noah Atagi. I'm actually from Ogden. I went to Bonneville High School. And yeah, I just want to thank you guys for always supporting us and always giving us a reason to love it here in Ogden. You know, like, all my teammates, all our teammates, we talk about how much we love Ogden and being here and being at Weber State. You know, we love winning and we love being here. So thank you.
Yeah, I'm Noah Vaeia. I'm from South Jordan, Utah. I went to Harriman High School. I play linebacker in number 13. But I just want to say thank you, guys, for all you guys do for us. We appreciate your support. It means a lot. Thank you.
I'm Eddie Heckard. I'm from Las Vegas, Nevada. I play corner here at Weber State. And I just want to say thank you for supporting us and recognizing us today. So, yeah, thank you.
Well, we appreciate you guys all. Thank you so much for this recognition and what you guys do for us. So thank you.
Thanks for making time to visit us tonight, Coach. And just to piggyback on what Noah Atagi mentioned, he said the teammates always talk about how much they love Ogden. That's something that I hope always continues. And speaking from personal experience, my old teammates from Weber State, we all have a really special spot in our heart for this community. And there are so many people from those long ago years of playing football at Weber State that continue to come back, many of whom came back and stayed here, are raising families here. So I hope you guys will always love this community as much as this community loves you guys. So keep up the good work. Get back to studying, recovering from whatever weightlifting you, Coach, is making you do, and keep making this progress.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Coach.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
I would like to tell the Coach also, Ogden loves Weber State. You've added a lot of pride, just like Ben said, to our community. And I'd like to invite you and the mayor to lead us in the Wildcat cheer.
That's easy.
Okay, I can do that. Ready? Whoa! We are the Wildcats, scratching, snarling. We're gonna win this game. Upward and onward, fighting Wildcats of pride and honor on Tuesday. And we'll never stop till we have won. Till purple and white show rain, we'll growl and snarl and show how we rate for Weber State, Weber State. Great, 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 great. Weber State, Weber State. Great, 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 great. What? Weber State, Weber State. Great, 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 great. I don't know if Zoom does that justice. I wasn't in the team room like Ben was for a lot of that, so I can't say that I noticed. Thank you, Coach, for everything you and your guys have done. You've represented us really well, and we are really proud of you. Well, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Keep doing it. We gotta have a better one this year, even.
Much success. Yep.
We'll do that justice. Back in person in the chambers. We'll make sure to do it justice every time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, see you, guys.
See ya.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Thanks, Councilmember Nadolski, for that. And then next on the agenda is a request to be on the agenda from the Weber Morgan Health Department. And tonight, I believe we have Brian Benyon and Skylar Pyle. Oh, and Lori Butters. So I'm not sure who's gonna go first or lead out, but we welcome you, and the time is now yours.
Well, this is Brian. I'll get started. Thanks for the opportunity to present our vaccination plan for COVID. And we've been rolling that out the last few weeks. So I will turn the time over to Skylar Pyle, who many of you may know. We are fortunate to get her from the Ogden School District in emergency planning. She came right into the heat of the battle as, in September, as we were finalizing our plan and then have to roll it out. And she's done a great job leading the charge with her team. So Skylar, you want to go ahead and take over?
Absolutely. Thank you so much. I'm gonna share my screen with you guys here. All right, so you can see my presentation screen?
Yes, thank you.
Wonderful. All right, my name is Skylar Pyle, and I'm the Emergency Manager here at Weber Morgan Health Department. And we really appreciate you guys giving us some time to fill you in on our COVID-19 vaccine distribution plan. All right. First, we want to start by saying thank you. We cannot thank our community enough. We would not be able to vaccinate those in our community without the incredible support that we and dedication that we've received from individuals and agency partners in Weber and Morgan Counties. We just want to stop and recognize really quick, first and foremost, Weber State University and the D Event Center staff and police. They have been just incredible and invaluable in the support that they have provided. All of the police and fire departments within Weber and Morgan Counties have also been extremely supportive. But we do want to give a special shout out to Ogden City Fire. They have just been invaluable to us, you know, in the support that they've given as well. Our Medical Reserve Corps volunteers are incredible and have done so much. We wouldn't be able to hold our points of dispensing if it weren't for them being here to support us. And our Weber Morgan staff is just working hand over foot to get their jobs done, as well as any and everybody else who has supported in one way or the other. Thank you so much to everybody in our community for everything that you have done and helped us with. So our vaccine dispensing, just to date, so far, what we've done. In December, December 28th, we received our first allocation of doses. And on December 29th and 30th, we had a small clinic where we vaccinated 320 pod staff and volunteers. On January 5th, 6th, and 7th, we did another three set of points of dispensing where we had appointments for 970 people each one of those days. You can see how many doses were actually provided. We have, you know, people who end up canceling or no showing. So we don't always end up giving all of our vaccine out at the end of the night. Then on the 12th and the 13th, we did points of dispensing where we held appointments for 1,300 people each one of those days and had a little bit more success in receiving almost all of the appointments that were scheduled that came. The priority with all of those different points of dispensing were healthcare workers, first responders, and K-12 educators. Within those six dispensing clinics, the Weber Morgan Health Department vaccinated 5,441 individuals. Our vaccination appointment process is moving quickly and changing very often right now. So we are trying to do our best to keep some consistency with that. So right now, we are scheduling weekly mass clinics that are scheduled based on the allotment that is sent to the Health Department each week. Our allotment here at Weber Morgan Health Department is 8.3% of the state's allocation, and that varies every week. Our new appointment slots are made available weekly on Thursdays at 3:00 PM. We have a link that will go live on our website, as well as we have a team of Weber Morgan employees that are assisting those who are not able to make their own appointments due to physical limitations or language barriers. We do have the phones going so that we're able to make those appointments for them. People can also contact us through email at covid19@webercountyutah.gov to ask questions, and we will respond to them, as well as they can call our phone number to get any questions answered. We encourage all caregivers, friends, and family to assist those who need support at this time to schedule an appointment. We would appreciate if more appointments can be scheduled via computer and phone so that we might be able to get that done. But anybody that needs assistance, if you can find some, please do. If not, again, we have a team that is working to assist that and support that effort. We have information about vaccine appointments that are being posted. As we learn about those changes, we are posting them on our Weber Morgan Health Department website through social media. And you can, again, call our phone number, and we will answer any questions. Our upcoming vaccine clinics. We are holding mass clinics following the distribution timeline set forth by the federal and state government, which can be found on our website. Under the current distribution timeline, through the month of February, the Health Department is responsible for vaccinating healthcare workers and behavioral health workers, EMS and first responders, K-12 educators, and residents who are 70 years and older. Mass clinics are going to be held at the D Event Center every week. We have community nursing services that has been assigned to our K-12 educators, and they are currently holding clinics within schools and within school districts every week. We have mass clinics that are being held at a church building in Morgan City, and that will be every other week moving forward. Again, our information is changing weekly, sometimes daily, sometimes hourly. And we are trying to adapt the plan to accommodate those changes and for the varying populations as quickly as we possibly can. Just to give you a little idea of what the point of dispensing looks like, we are at the D Event Center working around their concourse. Right now, patrons will enter in through the east entrance where they are screened for an appointment and asked to show their ID and/or a form of credentials for verification to ensure that we are staying within our age bracket and prioritized groups that have been in that pool of individuals that we're doing now. Patrons that are not in the current group being served and that may not have an appointment will be given information on how to schedule an appointment, and then they will be asked to leave the point of dispensing. If you do not have an appointment, you will not be served. Patrons who pass the screening process will then move on into our registration where their information will be verified. At registration, patrons will also be asked questions, and they will receive their vaccine card, which is almost as important as your license at this moment, keeping your vaccine card that you receive after you've received your vaccination. Patrons will then move into the dispensing area where they will receive their vaccine, have their vaccine card completed. And then patrons will be asked to wait for 15 minutes in our waiting area or in their vehicles where we have paramedics that are monitoring the parking lot. It is recommended that people wait for 15 minutes after they receive their dose. Some upcoming vaccine clinics. We know that although the process has been taking 30 minutes or less, really, for most of our populations to get through, we are asking that patrons be prepared to wait. The pod requires walking to get through the process. So if anybody does need any support, we ask that they may bring one caregiver with them to help them get around the point of dispensing. But we're working diligently to make accommodations and put those in place to assist those individuals as well as best as we can. But we are limited on our available staff to assist with that support. So we do thank you for everybody for understanding. These are some pictures that we received from individuals that came to our vaccination clinic. And just wanted to show a few of the pictures that we have from our point of dispensing. And then here are some information that anybody on the call right now can write down and be able to get ahold of us and answer any questions. We can answer any questions that you have from the website. And then there is our phone number. Does anybody have any questions that I can answer?
Yes, Chair, is it okay if I ask?
Yes, go ahead.
Well, I also have a comment. It is so great to see all three of your faces. It's been a while. I've been staying clear so you can do your important work. And really sad that Brian Benyon is retiring, but that's beside the point. I just, I wanted to ask some... Community members were asking me, and you did answer this in your presentation, Skylar, but they were asking, you know, if, you know, because there are people that don't get the vaccine, even though they're registered for various reasons, should they come to the site and just see if they can get in? And what I heard you saying was, no, you will not be served if you go to the D Event Center. So I just want to make that clear for some folks. And then some of them were concerned because they were worried that then those vaccines can't be used. But maybe you could explain if those go to waste if people don't show up for their appointments or what happens with those?
So we are opening up the vials one at a time, you know, as we go through the process. So of course, once we get towards the ending evening parts of the hour, they are opened one at a time so that we aren't having any vaccine waste. And we are slowly kind of getting through that process to ensure that we don't open any vials. If the vials are not open, then they are able to go back into the refrigerator or freezer for the length of time that they're able to be in the refrigerator or freezer, depending on the vaccine, the particular, whether that's Moderna or Pfizer. But so we have not had any, we have not had any vaccine waste due to doses that were drawn into a syringe that we didn't end up giving out.
Great. And one more question for me. Are you accepting any volunteers to help with the effort in any way?
We are accepting volunteers right now. We are working with affiliate agencies, like, as of course, our fire departments who are putting a lot of support for us and volunteers and whatnot. But we're also working with affiliate agencies in other ways. And then if individuals are interested, we are asking that they were, that they sign up with our Medical Reserve Corps program so they can email any of us here at the Health Department, and that will get over to myself or Katie Lewis, who is handling our volunteer coordination at this moment.
Skylar, I've been asked, maybe this is too obscure, I don't know. People that have been ill but never got tested, just to find out for sure whether they had COVID. What should they do when it comes time to be vaccinated? Is there anything different or...?
Well, if it was never confirmed that they were positive with COVID, then there's not really a way for us to answer that question necessarily other than, I mean, that they can still receive, if they're eligible, of course, they're able to get an appointment and receive a dose. They are, we are being told from the state that for individuals who have had COVID, that they ask that they wait 90 days before they receive the COVID-19 vaccine.
Okay, thank you. That answers the question.
Chair?
Yes, please.
I have a couple of questions. One of them is, do we have to do this process each week? For an example, if I called in and left my email, would I, will I have to do this each and every week to call in to get a scheduled date on that?
The process has been moving very fast, as we kind of indicated. It's very fluid from day to day, even hour to hour at this moment. And we are trying to find the best solution at this time to eliminate people having to call back over and over again, but at the same time, make it equitable. At this time, right now, that link going live on Thursdays at 3:00 PM is what we have available. And then the roster that we had created a couple of weeks ago when the governor announced, you know, his interest in that. We do have emails that we're able to send back to, but at this time, we are also still sending them information to indicate that the link is about to go live. So that they are able to get signed up. Um, again, we're working really diligently right now to try to find the best process. But with how fast everything has moved, which isn't necessarily a good excuse. But um, it's just been moving so quickly that we didn't really expect to be in the public population just yet. With how our planning was prior to all of this kind of happening in the last three weeks. So um, at this time, that is the process that we have is to keep checking that link and the multiple links that we hope to provide moving forward. And we're hoping to try to schedule a few weeks out. Um, but again, our doses are limited. They change every week. So we're trying to find a best process for that.
When the governor announced that, I went online to register. Uh. Is there a way that I can find out if that is actually in the system?
If you are in the system?
Uh huh.
Um, you know, other than probably if you spoke with somebody or calling us back to ask that question, but if you spoke to a person and or and or did the roster and the survey. You would be on the list and the roster that we have available to send emails to.
Okay. And when they go in, uh, if I go in and get the uh the vaccine. Um, when I register, do they test me for COVID at that time?
We do not test for COVID at the point of dispensing. Um, we ask some COVID qualifying questions at our screening, um as you do when you walk into other facilities or buildings. But we aren't doing testing at this time, um nor do I expect that we will do testing at the point of dispensing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Sure.
Couple of questions. Okay. Hey Skylar, thanks for being here tonight and thanks to your team for everything you're doing. Um, I really can't imagine a more difficult or more important task for. For our community or for the world. So thanks for doing that. Um, did I, did I read right in your presentation that you anticipate being working on these on these initial priority groups through February? Is that what I read?
That's what we're hearing and being told right now is that we should have um through February to be able to work through these groups. And I'm hoping that that stays that way so that we can kind of dwindle down that um pool of people. But again, um. The government could change that at any moment and we could have another priority group or another group that gets put into the pool.
Okay. And then does that anticipate the second round of shots or is that just to to get through the first round for that priority group?
Well, that is for the first round because many of them have already have not received their their first dose yet. So um, we're trying to get all first doses into those particular individuals by the end of February. Um, some of them will start hopefully their second doses as well, but we'll wait and hear what's going on with those second doses. But but we we should start those second doses as well. If that's what the government informs us to start doing.
Okay. Can you just give me a sense of, I don't know how much 8.2% of the state allotment is about. And I know you said it varies. Can you give me a sense for like what the range has been for how much we have received?
Absolutely. We have received close to 1,300 doses, give or take, for the last three weeks. So it's a pretty small, it's a pretty small amount that we're receiving each week to try to get through. And we are utilizing all of those doses. Again, you saw some appointments that aren't aren't showing up. So we have a small amount that is rolling over into the following week. But um, but we are making appointments and utilizing all the doses that are coming to us. And now that we're allocating doses to community nursing services for those educators specific. So um educators aren't necessarily coming to our point of dispensing anymore. They're having individual clinics that community nursing services is doing for them. And we're allocating some of our dosage to them for that. And then we are also, you know, starting to do points of dispensing up in Morgan. So that takes a little bit away from our Weber County dosage that's available. But it's a pretty small amount of vaccine at this time that we're working with.
Okay. And then I have one last question and I'll be done, I promise.
No, you're fine.
Do we have any sense for what percent of our local population is willing to get the vaccine?
No, um, we never really, I mean, obviously, we didn't do a survey with the thousands and thousands of people that, you know, that are just general public. Um, I think in the beginning, when it all kind of started, um, there was, there's quite a bit of hesitation for a lot of individuals and skepticism about the vaccine. But. I think as more people start to get it and we continue to do our points of dispensing, people are feeling a lot more comfortable. So whatever that percentage we thought maybe was in the beginning of people who just weren't interested. I think that interest is starting to change as we move forward and they see that people aren't having adverse reactions and um, you know, we're. We're still well after we get our vaccine and keep moving forward and stuff. So I I imagine that that percentage is actually increasing to people that are interested more than what it was before and what we thought.
Okay. Thank you so much for answering my questions. Appreciate it.
Skylar, I might just add, this is Brian. Uh, was in a meeting a few weeks ago, and I know the state's done some surveys. Uh, the interest in this would have been before we started doing vaccines, but there was about 70% interest. According to that survey, it was just one state survey. I I've heard some uh figures similar to that nationally. But uh, we're, we're hoping that we can get, uh, of course, more than that, um, in order to build the herd immunity. Um, and we, we believe that as more information comes out and shows how safe and effective this vaccine is, that hopefully um. Those that are kind of on the fence or uh will see uh the benefits of receiving the vaccine. It not only helps them, but the whole community.
Thanks, Brian. Thank you.
Uh, Chair?
Yes, please.
Uh, I would like to know if you have that information, what our positive cases are in Weber County. And it seems like our death rate is. Increasing. Uh, is, is that showing any real ways of coming down the death rate in there?
Yeah, let me, I can address that. I, I'm kind of a numbers geek and I was looking at those today. Um. As far as the mortality rate, um. The, the number of positives have certainly gone up, uh, but the, the mortality rate is still at 0.5%. Our goal is to keep that below 1% and we have. That hasn't really moved the national, uh, it was at about 0.8. Earlier this year and it's fallen between uh to 0.5. Nationally, the rate is 1.7% mortality rate. Um, the, the indicators that we're really looking at. Are, uh, what are our new cases look like over the last 14 days? And uh, so we've been watching that. We want it to be less than 325. That would be where we could get back in the moderate transition instead of the high transition. This week, it's right at 1,130 per 100,000. Um, but it's been as high as 1,400. Uh, so it has fallen over the last week, actually. The other thing, the other thing that we're watching is the seven day positive rate. So. Early in this pandemic, we were below 6%. People would go get tested, they had symptoms and uh 6% uh would be positive. It uh rose to 35% um January, the week of January 6th. That's about almost 36%. So more than one out of every three that was being tested was positive. It has since come down to 21.5%. Our goal is to get that below 13% here in the next few, well, next month. That would allow us to move back into moderate and obviously some of the. Uh, the recommended um procedures or uh protection measures uh would uh change if we could get to that. Uh, percentage of positivity. And the other thing that we've all along been messaging is protecting our hospital. Utilization, particularly the ICU use. And that goal is to keep it below 77%. And as you know, it's been in the 90s. Um, we've been as high as uh 97% uh middle of December. Uh, but this week, we're right at 91%. Still way too high. Got to work on that, but we'd like to see that come down. Uh, but the good news is the mortality rate is not climbing. And our case rate um over the last seven days has really declined. We uh, let me just look real quickly. I don't know if you care about all these numbers, but it kind of paints the picture of what we're looking at. So. If you look at last week, so the ninth, the weekend ending on the ninth, we had. During that week, in the Weber Morgan Health District, including Morgan, we had 2,002 cases during that week. This past week, we've just had 1,145. And uh, we'd like to see that continue to decline. And if that, if we could get that below, like I said, 325 per 100,000. Uh, we'd feel pretty good. And then the vaccine, and I think the vaccine, we'll see as the months go, the vaccine will really kick in and. And show its protective and and how efficient it'll be. And um, and hopefully that'll also encourage people to want to. Uh, get the vaccine. But, you know, we still, the best uh protective measures until you get the vaccine, obviously, is wearing that mask and social distancing and. Good hygienic practices and staying home when you're sick. And we continue to message that. Is that helpful information?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Very much so.
Um, the other thing um that I was gonna mention, I'm sure uh Brian could probably respond better. Um. About even after you get the first dose or the second dose of the vaccine, we should still continue to, you know, use those protective measures as well. And I think I read today that the vaccine after the second dose, it takes two weeks for it to become most effective. Is that correct? I don't want to spread misinformation.
No, that's, that's, you're exactly right, Angela. Um, depending on which vaccine, but yeah, it'll be about 95%. Protective uh after that second dose in two weeks. So that'll be great. And uh, what the state and what we'll be watching are those uh metrics that I mentioned about the hospital. Utilization, ICU utilization, and then what are our rates over the last seven to 14 days? And can we get, you know, below so we can actually get in the low risk here? And I'm, I feel confident that we'll get there in the next few months. I'm just anxious. I just want it now. I think we all do. But it's encouraging that this last week we saw some real improvements and we just hope that the following weeks will continue that trend downward. So we're, we're seeing a decline right now. And school's back in session, Christmas is over. So hopefully we've weathered those storms. Um. We've saw, we obviously saw some increases over those times, but uh. I know we stress the hospital system out, but if we can get them below the 77%, where they can be a little bit more normal and we can feel comfortable, I think we all can breathe a little easier. That's our goal and that's the things that we'll watch. And then the governor will indicate when the mask mandate is lifted. In his order. So we'll watch for that.
Thank you for bringing that information to us. And um, like Councilor Nadolski said, thank you for the. Care that you provide for our community and for the task that you guys have taken on. This, this is an important one and we appreciate all that you're doing to make our community safer. So thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments for anyone from the Weber Morgan Health Department?
Chair, I just want to make sure. So, so they, if, if anybody has any questions, they can go to the Weber Morgan Health, um. Like when, when you're going to operate to 60, you know, I mean, so, right? So that's what, that's where they'll find that, right? Correct. Everybody can go to the Weber Morgan Health Department website and we have a few different pop-ups that are even happening on the website. So you can pop up and go to our COVID-19 page. That gives a lot of details about um things that are happening as well as on that Thursday, when we um make that link live. We'll also have a pop-up that will come up first on the homepage where people can go directly to that scheduling page and get their um appointment scheduled in the timeframe that they have available. Awesome. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that's where it was. So thanks. Thank you, you guys, for allowing us to give this presentation.
Thank you. Great presentation. Okay, seeing no other discussion, we'll go ahead and move on. Um, next on the agenda is the approval of minutes. First is the work session of June 16th and the regular meeting of October 6th, 2020. Um, Councilmember Chuburka.
Yes, I've read those minutes, Chair, and I find them to be correct.
Okay. And the works, joint work session of October 13th and the regular meeting of October 20th, 2020, Councilmember Hare.
Yes, Chair Blair, I've read those and found them to be accurate to the rest of my recollection.
Thank you. Uh, the joint work session of November 10th, the special meeting of November 10th, and the closed session of December 8th, 2020, Councilmember Nadolski.
They seem accurate. Thanks.
Yep, thank you. And the joint work session of November 17th and the regular meeting of November 17th, 2020, Councilmember Lopez.
Yes, Chair, the meetings, uh, oh, the minutes, excuse me, seem accurate and I move that we approve the minutes. Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to approve the minutes by Councilmember Lopez and a second by Councilmember Nadolski. This is a voice vote. All in favor? By any opposed? That passes. Thank you. Um, next is common consent. We have two items listed, the. Uh, FY 2021 through 2025 Consolidated Plan and Fiscal Year 2021 Annual Action Plan Amendment Number One, which we got some more information about during the work session. And Glassman Way Annexation. Um, so either, if there's any discussion, we can take that now or I would entertain a motion.
Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the common consent agenda by um setting public hearing for both items for February 2nd.
I second it.
Thank you. We have a count, uh, we have a motion by Councilmember Hare to approve the two items listed under common consent and set the public hearings for both items. For February 2nd, 2021. Um, this is a voice vote. All in favor? By?
By.
Any opposed? That passes. Thank you. Um, next up, we have a public hearing and we have Justin Anderson and Lisa Stout here to present on the Business Depot Ogden Front Runner North Station.
Thank you, Chair Blair. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I, I will start this discussion. You have three actions before you tonight. Um. One is a budget ordinance to appropriate funds to the project. Uh, and the next one is um. A CIP amendment ordinance to appropriate the or adopt the budget into the current year CIP plan. And then an interlocal resolution uh for, for the um, the agreement with. Uh, for, for the, the purchase of this property. I'm just going to share my screen with you quickly. Okay. Can you see that? Okay?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, the, this, the amendment to the CIP ordinance is to amend. Brief EN 009 on the Front Runner North Expansion. Uh, the Planning Commission has reviewed this brief. And voted seven to zero uh that it should be included in the fiscal year 22 plan. Um. This brief was to recognize funds or to recognize a project to preserve the commuter rail corridor. In Weber County, including funding for a future site at the Business Development Ogden and for survey work. The funding the city has received from WACOG is $3 million for this project. So along with the amendment to the CIP plan. The ordinance, you have an ordinance before you to appropriate the budget. The $3 million from WACOG and an expenditure $3 million uh for EN 006, which is a property purchase. And Justin Anderson is here to talk about the interlocal agreement as well.
Yes, thank you, Lisa. So the interlocal agreement, um, to sum it up shortly, is a three-part agreement. One part is that. Ogden City will um in its name purchase the, the property for this expansion. And when we do that, WACOG will reimburse us um for that. And then in a future time to be determined. When UTA looks to expand that service, UTA will come back and pay um the county. For the $3 million, reimburse them, WACOG, and then Ogden City will transfer um it out of, the properties out of Ogden City's name into UTA's name. And that's kind of sums up the, the agreement.
Okay, any questions for Justin or Lisa?
Here, I, I just had a question for Justin. Maybe he knows, maybe he doesn't. I don't know. If there is a, any kind of a timeframe we can look to. Uh, or is it still indefinite? Is there, are we looking a year or two or we don't know?
You know, I, I don't know for sure. I don't, I don't think I'm the right one to answer that. UTA should be the one to answer that. I know UTA has been working on the expansion into Box Elder County. Um, and purchasing property. I know this is something they want to have happen. And so as far as the timeline. For, you know, the front runner expansion in this location, I, I don't feel comfortable answering that. But I do know that they are interested in making it happen as fast as they can.
Is there anything that we could do to maybe grease the skids a little bit and help that get moving?
Um, I, one, I know UTA is, is, you know, this is helpful for them to be able to do that. So this is something that we, we are doing as far as. Um, to continue to grease the skids. I, I don't, it'll probably just be funding for them. And so I know they're going after funding from federal agencies and other agencies to make this happen.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Sure.
Um, Justin, on the parking there, uh, uh, is there area there where uh enough for the parking of the station? And I understand that. We did receive some funding for, is it for, was it for this uh front runner here or was it for another project? That UTA has. It was in today's paper there.
You know, I'm, I'm not sure exactly, Councilmember Stevens, which funding you're asking for. But yes, in building a front runner station. Um, and, and it's going to be somewhere around Second Street and BDO. Um, UTA will determine exactly that location, but they will, they will have parking at that location.
I might be able to help. I read that article, Doug. I think that was about the BRT.
Is it? Okay.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt them.
That's a good project also.
Uh, Justin or Lisa, probably Lisa, will this, the money that we've received, will that pay for that property outright? We don't have to finance or do anything on our end?
My understanding, I haven't seen the agreement, uh, the rep C on the property. But my understanding is it's under contract and that is funding the full amount.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions for Lisa or Justin? If not, um. This is a public hearing, so we can go ahead and open the public hearing. Uh, if, is it? Brandon that could explain how to be a part of the public hearing process?
Yes, sir, it is. Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks.
To uh participate in the, this public hearing regarding this item, you have to be joining us via Zoom by using the raise hand feature. And it does not look like anybody is joining us via telephone, so I won't bother explaining that. And it does not look like anybody is joining us via telephone, so I won't bother explaining that.
First off, do we want to have, sorry, do we want to have Lisa present on item B also? And then take public hearing on everything, or just on these three, and then do the item number B by itself?
Let's just do this three now and then.
Perfect. Okay. Then we'll go ahead and open up the public comment portion. Or public input, sorry, public input. Let me turn that on.
Hang on, I believe the raise hand feature has not been activated. That's on me. Give me one second, and I will allow that. That has been fixed.
Okay. I don't see any hands raised yet, but we'll give it a minute, just to be safe. Okay.
Chair, I'll move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion to close the public hearing by Councilmember Chaburka and a second by Councilmember Hare. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes, and if there's no further discussion, we can entertain a motion.
Chair, I just have a, a real quick question for Councilmember Hare.
Yes, go ahead.
So did this come through the Transportation Committee on WACOG, or were you part of that?
I, I was on, it was last year's Transportation Subcommittee. This actually wasn't directly addressed there, but it was at the General COG, so we did, we did tour it as the, as a Subcommittee, but that was about it. Any, any other question concerning that, or?
No, no, I just wondered, I, just, people were in favor of it, obviously, because it passed the WACOG.
Yeah, it, it, that discussion kind of got a little bit mixed up with the, an overpass over the train tracks on 12th Street, so it was kind of all.
All mushed together?
Kind of mushed together, yep. Even though they're two separate things.
I just hope that they're supportive. Obviously, they funded it, but I just wondered how supportive, so thanks.
Yeah, I didn't see any pushback from any COG members, so it was, it was pretty, gonna go forward.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion or comments? Then I would entertain a motion.
Well, Chair, I'll make a motion then, um, that we adopt ordinance 2021-4.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Hare to adopt proposed ordinance 2021-4 and a second by Councilmember Chaburka. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nadolski?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Vice Chair White?
Aye.
Chair Blair?
Aye, that passes. Thank you.
Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 2021-3.
I second it.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Chaburka to adopt proposed ordinance 2021-3 and a second by Councilmember Stevens. This also is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nadolski?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Vice Chair White?
Aye.
Chair Blair?
Aye, thank you. That passes. And last is the interlocal agreement.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2021-3.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 2021-3 by Councilmember Hare and a second by Vice Chair White. This, this too is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nadolski?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Vice Chair White?
Aye.
Chair Blair?
Aye, that passes. And next, move on to the fiscal year 2021 budget amendment for 26th Street, and we have Lisa Stout to present to us again.
Thank you. Again, I, I do appreciate the opportunity to be here with you. The action for your consideration is to appropriate funds to a capital improvement project that was included in the fiscal year 21 CIP plan. This was a street reconstruction that engineering is working on. The brief is to reconstruct Wall Avenue from East Washington, east of Washington Boulevard to, including improvements north of 26th Street on Grant Avenue. They will be reconstructing pavement to handle traffic, including bus-related traffic. They will have sidewalk and landscaping with the addition of bike lanes, street lighting, and storm drain improvements. As this project moves forward, there are funds in the Storm and Sewer Utility committed to this project through the bond proceeds, which are funded through the master plan projects. The budget opening for your consideration is to appropriate a total of 400, $4,886,600 to this CIP brief. The total appropriation is 5.7 million, just over 5.7 million. We are using a portion of city funds to help complete this project. Most of it is coming from WACOG, just over $4 million. The city has B and C funds and active transportation funds that are in fund balance. These are funds the city has received for these two revenue sources over and above what was appro, has been appropriated. And the, there are restrictions on how the city can use these funds. The improvements along 26th Street do qualify, and the city is recommending appropriating 836,950 of those funds to go towards these improvements along 26th Street. Also have Justin Anderson here with, with, with us to answer any additional questions you have about the project itself.
Thank you, Lisa. Are there any questions for Lisa or Justin while they're here? If not, we will go ahead and take public input on this item. Brandon has already explained that process, so we'll just go ahead and open it up for public input. Don't see any raise of hands yet. Okay. There is one hand raised. Diane Krantz? You should be able to go ahead and address the council on this item. She still shows muted.
Can you hear me? Yes, okay. I'm wondering if more of the buses are going to be using 26th Street then? Is, if, is part of the plan, is the part of this plan that there'll be more buses running along 26th? Than are currently using that stop at 26th and Washington? Do you know why? In other words, is there another reason for improving that street besides the fact that it probably desperately needs pedestrian walks?
Are, are tho, are those your questions, Diane?
Yes.
Okay, we'll gather all of it, and then we'll address all the questions at the end, if that'll work for you.
That's fine.
Perfect. Okay, thank you for your comments. I'm not seeing any other comments or hands raised.
Chair, seeing that there are no more comments, I would make a motion that we close the public hearing on this item.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Hare and a second by Councilmember Chaburka to close the public hearing on this item. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then are there any councilmembers that would like to address Diane's questions?
Chair, I, I think that's a better question for UTA. Maybe Justin, if he's still around, might know, so.
Okay.
Only thing I was going to say, Chair, is, um, I don't know if Diane's aware of all the other projects that are happening there on 26th Street, so if Justin, if anybody would like to talk about that, that might be helpful to her.
Okay, Justin, are you still available?
I am. I would be happy to answer her questions, and so in the short term, there will still be the same amount of buses that are currently there now. Up until the time the BRT comes fully online. Once the BRT comes fully online, some of the, the buses that are there now will shift over and, and be ran differently. However, there's still, there's still going to be stops on 26th Street. The stop will actually be shifted to, in between Grant and Lincoln is where this, that stop will be shifted, and it'll kind of tie in with the development that's taking place there on that block, so we, we still will have buses. We have had some infrastructure, some storm water, or storm sewer collapsed in a few years ago, so one of the things that we want to do is update all the infrastructure to make sure it'll still carry the weight of buses, because we will still have buses running on that road.
Great, thank you, Justin. Okay. And then is there any other comments about this item? Or discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Chair, I'll make a motion then that we adopt Resolution 20, 2021-2, or ordinance 2021-2.
I second.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 2021-2 by Councilmember Hare and a second by Councilmember Lopez. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Nadolski?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Chair White?
Aye.
Chair Blair?
Aye, that passes, thank you. Next up is reports from administration, the Capital Improvement Plan ordinance, ordinance amendments. And we have Lisa Stout again.
Thank you, Chair Blair. Councilmembers, it's a, it's a pleasure to be here. Mark Stratford did a lot of work on this ordinance. There was a group from the city and some, and a lot of discussions with council staff regarding this ordinance and, and recommends to, recommendations to improve it. Mark Stratford couldn't be here tonight, so I am fortunate to be the voice of administration and going through this ordinance with you. I would like to review the changes that are proposed in the CIP ordinance. The CIP plan is, is a major part of the city budget cycle and, and an important ordinance for the city to follow. One of the proposed changes is to raise the CIP limit from $30,000 to $50,000. It's been a while since the $30,000 limit was set with rising costs. And also in a review of the CIP briefs that have been written in, in the last several years, there have been very few that are below $50,000, so we are recommending in the ordinance to increase the CIP limit to $50,000. We're also proposing three different types of CIP briefs in the plan. The first would be a one-time CIP. That's a unique brief that, once funded, generally is completed and then removed from the plan going forward. So generally, council would see it, Planning Commission would see it just once. And we would see a lot of turnover in these one-time plans. In connection with that, there is a type for ramp CIPs. We felt that it would be important to call the ramp CIP briefs out because of the significant investment ramp has been putting in, into the city program. And the fact that the city can match the ramp funds and leverage those better, we wanted to make sure those were identified separately. Those are similar to one-time projects, where generally they would be funded and then would be removed from the CIP plan going forward. And then we would have a type called a perpetual CIP plan. These would be CIPs that you would see over and over each year with updates on the briefs and what's included in the, in the CIP plan for the five years. Good example of this is the water or the sewer master plan projects. Things are called out and identified for you so that you're, there's transparency in what is being done, but there is a long-term plan for these, and they are updated annually. We are also proposing a change in amendments to the CIP plan to have two different types of amendments. A major amendment, which would be a significant change to the scope of a previously approved project or adoption of a new CIP brief mid-year. This would be, need to be reviewed by Planning Commission and adopted by council into the current year CIP plan. And then minor amendments to the CIP plan, where no change in the scope or a very, very minor change to the, to the brief, the scope of the CIP, including budget-only changes. If additional funds became available through a grant or the CIP brief was only partially funded and an additional funding is being proposed, would be an example of a minor amendment. We're also proposing in the ordinance to change the timing of the CIP. Generally, we have done this in the fall, and, and council has adopted it in early, early in the, in the calendar year. We're proposing that we change the timing so that it is transmitted, the plan is transmitted to the council by March 1st without rankings from administration. The Planning Commission would focus on compliance with the general plan and provide their recommends, recommendations to council in April. After Planning Commission review, the city would officially transmit the plan with rankings to the city council for their review. This would line up the CIP plan and the budgeting of the CIP briefs with the, with the annual city budget. So that process is happening concurrently. And it, we found that when we were asking project managers to complete their briefs during the summer, we would open the database in July. It was hard during the construction season, so this moves it to so it's off the construction season and project managers have more time to focus on completing the briefs. Along with that, we would put ramps that will be applied for during the coming fiscal year in the current year plan. So for example, this year, briefs would be proposed that then would be submitted to the county for ramp funding in January of 2022. We're also proposing that the critical contingency brief that has normally been included in the CIP plan is no longer included in the CIP plan. It would still be funded, it just would not go to planning commission since it really is a contingency account for emergencies or needs for the city for the upcoming year. And I believe those are all of the major changes that are being proposed in this ordinance. Does council have any questions or comments?
Chair, may I make a comment?
Yes, please.
I just, I feel really badly because I don't have any questions at all. But I just appreciate this process and these changes so much. I'm really excited to take it on and see how it goes and I'm sure we'll have feedback about that too. But you know, you covered this so well in the work session too, but I just wanted to say I really appreciate all the thought and work that went into the plan.
Thank you. It was a great joint effort between administration and council staff and hopefully we'll meet the needs of the council.
Chair? I also want to thank you all for these updates and improvements. I'm really excited that this is a huge step forward in my mind. I just, are you ready to go this March? Is it, y'all geared up?
We're having meetings to make sure we've got all the briefs written, so we're getting there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I think the timing that we've outlined in the CIP improvements is better for the city. It seems like it correlates with a lot of our budget items and who knows, we probably will be able to save some construction costs along the way. I think it's just a better way of management of our CIPs.
Yeah, thank you. That was, that was something that administration was excited about that there wouldn't be such a gap between setting priorities in November and when proposed funding came in April to council.
Chair, if I could just make a comment too. You know, this isn't the sexy stuff that we get to deal with very often, but I just want to say that, you know, the CIP is huge. What we don't realize, I think, as a, as a, as a city, you know, or constituents is that this is the stuff that's over and beyond the general budget every year. And so, you know, these are the big items, the big ticket items, the things that are over five years long, you know, streets and buildings and, you know, equipment that needs to be purchased. And so for you guys to take on this task, again, kudos to you. I think many of already the council members have said kudos to you, but I just want to make sure that you really understand that this is important and the city and our constituents need to know that this is important that you did this because it's really being really good stewards of the taxpayers' money and really helping us. So thank you very much for doing what you did. Let's hope that it goes away clean. That we know.
I agree with all the comments that have been said. The CIP is such a huge process and I appreciate both our staff and the administration continually working and trying to refine this process to make it better and more effective each each time we go through it. And so I, kudos to everybody that put the work into this because it really is a major undertaking and a lot, a lot of great things that come in our city come through the CIP. So this is, this is wonderful and I'm thankful that, or thankful for all the work that went into it. I also probably like Councilmember Stevens, I can remember when the CIP's limit was 10,000. So there's been some big changes.
Back then, the CIP was a dinosaur.
Yeah. Okay, is there any questions, any questions for Lisa or any other discussion?
Chair, if there's no questions, make a motion if you're ready. The motion would be to adopt proposed ordinance 2021-5.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Stevens to adopt proposed ordinance 2021-5 and a second by Councilmember Chaburka. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nadolsky?
Aye.
Vice Chair White?
Aye.
Chair Blair?
Aye. That passes. Thank you. We have some new business, committee ordinance amendments. And we have Janine Niller-Smith, the city council executive director, to present that to us.
Chair Blair, great to finally get this before you. We've been working on this for a while. It was almost, it's been a couple of years where we started to have a discussion with council members about all of the committees that the city has and kind of reviewing them to see if they were meeting the original purpose of the committee and then also if they were meeting the needs of the city in their advisory capacity. And as a result of that discussion, there was sort of a spin-off discussion about the need to try and get more diversity in those committees and all kinds of diversity, including just diversity of thought, you know, ethnicity, everything that you could think of. And so we had that discussion. And also there were some concerns expressed about the way people were getting to the committees. The information that committee openings were available wasn't always readily available to the general public. Often committees were, new positions were filled by friends of existing committee members and and that. So this ordinance, these ordinance changes are a result of those discussions and some discussions with the administration on trying to make a few changes to the general committee ordinance. So I'm just going to share my screen really quickly. I just have one quick slide that kind of summarizes this for you. So let me see. Sorry. So although there's not very many changes, I think they're really significant. One of the first changes is requiring that the committee members work through, at work and communicate through the city staff. This is just to make sure that the city staff and administration are kept in the loop when the committee are doing the work that they've been asked to do. And then it establishes this as a policy of the city that there's a consideration of all aspects of diversity and that they also, when they're submit, that when the administration is submitting recommendations for committee appointments to the council, that they provide that relevant background information that shows why they would be a good committee member and how they might represent the diversity that could support that committee in a really strong way. It also requires the administration to create some sort of process that will allow the public to express interest in any open committee seats. And then just really super minor change is it just clarifies when council members are appointed to committees as ex-official members, what their terms would be. That doesn't happen very often because they are administrative committees. But I just wanted to make, while we were working on the ordinance, I wanted to make those changes. So those are the changes. This was a real, I appreciate Mara Brown's input on this. She was with the attorney's office when we worked on it and now management services director. And I think these are great changes and hopefully we can see if they will get to the outcomes that the council wanted to. And so the staff's recommendation is to adopt these ordinance changes.
Thank you, Janine. And thanks to those who worked on that. Yeah, this has been a lengthy process, but I think we have a much better process now. So are there any other comments or questions for Janine?
Chair, I don't have a question for Janine, but inasmuch as Mara worked on the ordinance and also is the, was the legal advisor over some of these committees, I wondered if she would comment on how she thinks this might work out.
Thank you, Councilmember Hare. I do know that there will be a space probably on the city website for an open, for taking more open applications for city committees in general. So we're really trying to encourage the public to submit applications of interest and so that we can, we can look to those when when there are openings on the committees, so kind of a rolling application process. And as I spoke earlier on this issue in a work session, there are a number, a lot of different committees that the city has and some have specific identified requirements for those positions. So whether there's a particular area of expertise that's being looked for on the landmarks commission, for example, or in the VZA. So some of the qualifications that are going to be identified by the administration might be in response to a particular qualification that needs to be filled on one of those boards, but also looking at the greater diversity picture as well. And so it is a commitment by the administration to provide that additional information to the council that you've been asking for where it's appropriate.
Thank you, Mara.
Chair, I'd like to make a comment. I'm just, you know, complimenting everybody tonight. But I just, I'm really excited about this change as well. I know that we've seen from several more recent committees that there is a lot of interest in the community for participation in the various things that we do. So I'm excited that we're attempting to make it more open and transparent.
Yeah. If there's no further discussion, I would go ahead and entertain a motion.
Chair, I'll make that motion if you don't mind. Make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2021-6.
No second.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 2021-6 by Councilmember Hare and a second by Councilmember Chaburka. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nadolsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Vice Chair White?
Aye.
Chair Blair?
Aye. That passes. Yeah, again, thank you to all those who worked on that. And I think it's exciting that we can provide opportunities to more residents and more citizens that want to engage in in our city. So this is a great opportunity for us and for them. Next up is public comments. This is an opportunity to address the council regarding concerns or any ideas to be considered. Everyone at the meeting, public comment will be limited to three minutes per person. Please state your name and your address for the record. And we'll have Brandon go ahead and give the participation instructions one more time, just so everyone's on the same page, and then we'll go ahead and take public comment.
Thank you, Chair. To participate in public comments, you must be joining the meeting tonight via Zoom and using the raise hand feature, which is found at the bottom of the application.
Great, thank you. Okay. Angel Castilla. Welcome. And you, the time is now yours.
Good evening. Angel Castilla, Ogden resident. I just wanted to ask you a couple of quick questions tonight. Pardon me. On March 4th in 2020, I made a motion as a planning commissioner on the CIP about the Marshall White Center. And that motion was intended to get the city council's attention, as y'all have been talking about fixing the Marshall White Pool for over two years. While my motion on the community's behalf to get your attention cost me my position on the planning commission. It was worth it as you allocated $300,000 for a feasibility study in late April 2020. Thank you for that. Thank you so much for listening to the community. I have not missed a city council meeting nor a work session in over two years. And when you allocated that money, there was a meeting where Jay Lauder had said that he could get this feasibility study done from the physical standpoint of the Marshall White Center of whether or not you could load on those walls because it is a very old building. Within seven months, we're really moving, it was supposed to happen within a year. And we are, you know, March is right around the corner. And I haven't seen Jay Lauder talk about that in work session or at city council. And I'd like to know who's managing that on the council's behalf and what's happening and where is that study? Because remember, you know, we're now into the third year. So we really need some action on that. And my second point was, I appreciate that Brandon does such a great job with managing your meetings and making sure that they're on Facebook and that they're accessible to the public. And what's even more important is that one of the upsides of this pandemic is the work sessions are available to anybody. And the work sessions are at a time during the day where most people, unless you own your own business like I do, you can't come to them, you can't participate. So I'd like to know what the city council is going to be doing going forward to meet the goals that you've put out in your budget process of being transparent and connecting to the community. What are you going to do to broadcast the work sessions once we actually get to the point where we can meet in person again? I look forward to that because there's so much, it's much better to see someone and sit across from them and feel intense. But I also don't want to alienate all of the people who are now participating because they can because the technology has allowed them to listen to a work session, to listen to a podcast. So I'd like to know what you're going to do in the future, moving forward, to broadcast or record the work sessions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Heath Soto. The time is now yours. Go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, everyone. Heath Soto, Ogden resident. I'd like to thank the city council for having that heartfelt, open discussion last week. It was meaningful to those of us that you represent. I mean that sincerely. Now, I'm glad to see the mayor showed up for tonight's council meeting. I know he's not required to attend these meetings, but since he doesn't respond to emails or phone calls, the least he can do is show up to more of these opportunities where the community can speak directly to him and he can face their criticism and concerns. One of the more intense discussions that the mayor skipped was the week before last about the encampments that the mayor had the police break up in direct opposition to CDC guidelines. Since he skipped out on that important follow-up discussion, I'm going to repeat what I said then because he clearly still needs to hear. Since he skipped out on that important follow-up discussion, I'm going to repeat what I said then because he clearly still needs to hear it. Members of our community spoke for nearly an hour about their concerns about how the encampment near the Lantern House was dispersed. After that hour of impassioned speeches, the mayor responded to these community concerns for four seconds. He said only every single encampment and everything else got a 24-hour notice so they could do that. That is not a cogent response. Then he went on about his personal life for another five minutes. I recommend the mayor go back and watch himself on these videos, especially at the end of that meeting on January 5th. It was incredibly tone deaf. I never, he never addressed a single concern that was made that night by the community. He still owes us a proper response. Mark Johnson tried much harder the following week to respond than the mayor did, but it was still lacking, and ultimately, it wasn't his poor decision to defend. Then, just last week, again, many people spoke at length with concerns about how the process of picking the new police chief felt shrouded in secrecy. Members of the council spoke at length and from the heart on the issue. The mayor spoke to all of these concerns for five seconds this time. He said, "If we need to talk about the process and how that works, we can do that." That's it. I've tried to say this in many ways, and there's no evidence that ever gets through, but I will try again. Mayor Caldwell, listen to your community, listen to the city council, and let us all know we've been heard. Now is not the time in our community to be uncommunicative and seemingly stuck in the belief that you cannot be told anything that would enlighten you or your process. If you don't feel that way, then you're doing a terrible job of letting us know you care. You cannot just say you appreciate our comments and leave it at that. I'm not saying you're a bad person. I'm not saying you don't care. All I'm saying is that you are providing no evidence to the contrary when you give our concerns such short shrift in your responses. And besides that, what the heck is going on with recycling? I haven't heard anything since the newspaper article said it was coming back, but the website's not updating. Thanks.
Thank you, Heath. Okay, I'm not seeing any more hands raised. I'm not seeing any more hands raised. So are there any council members that would like to address Angel Castilla's questions about the Marshall White Center study? Can't see anybody.
Chair, I don't have any updates because I don't know where we are in the study. I know that the Marshall White Advisory Council Board has been meeting. And I know it's in progress, but I guess as a council, we haven't had an update on where we are in the process.
Okay. Perfect. And then I will go ahead and just, I don't know if we have a plan moving forward to continue to keep the work sessions available electronically, but I would assume we would do that once we get back into meeting in person. So as that draws closer, I think we'll have more of a, more of a plan and something that we can actually lay out for the public. But as of right now, I'm not sure if we have something set out.
Chair, if I may, I actually have thought a lot about what Angel shared, what you just mentioned about broadcasting work session meetings. And I really think that we should think about it now because it might take some time to be ready when we transition. So I would just, I would just like to make a strong recommendation that if you and Councilmember White would be willing to bring this up in leadership and maybe look into it sooner rather than later, please.
Chair Blair, if I might?
Please.
We as staff have also been talking about it, and as a result, we have had some additional equipment installed in the workroom. As you all may know, there was not a camera in that room. We could, we could broadcast sound but not pictures, but now we've had a camera installed. And if the full council wants to start doing that, that's certainly an option. We now have the capability of doing that. And we've also talked that that probably going forward, assuming the council wants to do this, that we will also be running sort of hybrid meetings in our regular council meetings. So maybe the full council will be in the chambers, you'll be accepting comments in the chambers, but there will also be ability to accept comments through Zoom. So we have been talking about that as staff and working on. We don't have a plan writ, you know, written down and executed, but we've definitely touched all the points needed to make that happen if the council wants to make that happen.
Great, thank you.
It sounds like that, Chair, that we're moving forward to maybe one day meeting in our work session and also in the chambers. But Janine, do we actually record our work session where the public could actually go to that recording?
So we're recording it now. We didn't prior. Well, I take that back. It was, is recorded. The audio was recorded and the recorders were holding that. They're the, they're the keepers of the recordings.
Okay.
So that was prior to COVID. Since COVID, we record all our meetings and people can go to YouTube and see it. They can see it on our website, and then Brandon does a recap on a podcast. So there's lots of ways for people to get information about the meetings.
Okay.
I really love that. I mean, I just have to say, yeah, I love those possibilities, and I appreciate that you've already been thinking about that as a staff because I know there was definitely some reluctance when I first joined the council for that, for a variety of reasons, and technology, lack of technology was one of those things. But it's really helpful to me because sometimes the conversation we have in the work session informs so much action that we take in the public meeting, and it's hard to translate that for people. Sometimes I think we're just not engaged or not asking any questions, but it's because maybe we've seen the presentation three or four times in a work session, and we've had all that talking out. So to me, I love to be able to refer people to say, well, in this work session, you might want to listen to that conversation, you know. It's just a really great way to engage people further to understand our processes so that they don't just come to the public meeting and think that's the only time we're hearing things, and then we're making these giant decisions. And and I, obviously, I know it's not true, and once they learn more, they understand that. But I think just as a curious, you know, like just a glimpse, sometimes people think that's the only time we're ever talking about things.
Thank you.
Janine, do they contact the council office if they want that information or the recorders?
So right now, they can get it by going to YouTube. In the, if they wanted something pre-COVID, I'm not sure what the retention on those recordings are. But they could check with their quarters to see if they'd still be available. And so.
Okay. Thank you. Comments from the mayor or administration?
Sure. I'll just add, as we got attacked over this last little bit, I appreciate Angela and the rest of the city council's comments about us going through a thorough process and working through a lot of these issues and work sessions and everything else. And you know, personally, I'll just say I'm not in a position to be bullied into responding to some of those comments. So I appreciate them. I've heard them. I've read them. We look at them. We've done a good job, I believe, in terms of department directors and everyone else that we have in terms of an overall staff to review those comments, look at them, and do our due diligence on those. So I appreciate it, and thank you very much, and I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Mayor. Comments from council members?
Chair?
Yes.
Let me just take a few minutes. As you know, the Marshall White Center is a very complex issue. And I'm sure, and I know that Jay Lauder, the type of person he is, he's he hasn't forgotten about the Marshall White Center. And I'm sure that we'll be receiving some information along those lines. But the important thing is, is that we do that facility right. We need to have a structure there that will service the community at large. And so I'm confident in Jay Lauder that he will provide us the necessary information, and that's what I'm looking for.
Thank you. Any other council comments?
Chair, I just have one, one quick comment. Tomorrow night, the Planning Commission is actually reviewing the conditional use for consideration of recycled earth. So there is movement happening. It's at the Planning Commission's level to talk about a conditional use permit. So I've posted on my Facebook account if people want to know, or and/or you can get it on the Planning Commission's site if you want to listen in to what's happening with, with that. So more to come on the recycling side.
Thank you. Okay.
I have one comment, of course, Chair Blair. Again, I just appreciate your working through this electronic meeting platform. It can be challenging. So I'm there with you. I'm trying to help out there. I just wanted to make a comment about just how proud I am of our local leadership and our municipal government about how we have a peaceful changeover of leadership and looking forward to that leadership change tomorrow, whatever party you're with or et cetera, you know, and that's part of our process in our in our country. And so I'm excited, and I think I would say this, no matter who won, won the election, but I'm going to try to get this quote right to see if I have it most accurate. And this is our last night as a country that there has never been a female vice president. So super excited about that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments?
Chair, I just have, this is just a side comment. Sorry, I know we want to get out of here. There's a bunch of Weaver State. They might not be Weaver State students, but there's some folks that are taking the Citizens Academy class. And so there is another Zoom link afterwards in order to talk about the discussion. So I just wanted to make sure that people understood there's a Zoom link that they have to go to. And Dr. Murray has that if you need it. So I just wanted to make sure everybody is aware of that before we end tonight.
Thank you. And I would like to thank everyone that participated in the meeting tonight, both through public comment and listening in. Thank you, and thank you to the staff and administration for everything that we were able to get accomplished tonight. So if there's no other council comments, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, a motion to adjourn by Councilmember Hayer and a second by Councilmember Chaburka. This is a voice vote. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Again, thank you all, everyone, and have a great night.
Stay safe.